School Board to order. We have one adjustment to the agenda where discussion matter 6.1, we're just gonna have a short conversation about school environment and bullying. And are there any other adjustments to the agenda? You can't raise your hand at that point in time Cindy. I was like, "What?"
(laughing).
Okay, so is there anybody from the audience who's here to speak? No? Okay. So, we will move on to 5.1, Reports of the Board and the COLT Report.
So...
Oh, one quick thing.
Yes, yeah.
So, there's a Shelburne Band Concert this afternoon, or this evening, and so at 6:30, I will pass the meeting over to Colleen, and I will leave.
Okay.
So, just so everybody knows. I think Kathy should leave. And Jeff is leaving?
(inaudible).
Oh, sorry. So, you gave me a, "Dave, could you please do this?" And then I forgot. So, we have a new member, Jeff Solomon, who's from Shelburne. He's on the CVU Board. He's taking the place of Aaron Brady, who's unfortunately had stepped down. But I've known Jeff since the second or third day from my move, when I moved into the state of Vermont, and I've worked with Jeff a ton, so it's great to work with him more. And welcome to the Board. Thanks for stepping up.
Well, Miss Erin, but it's nice to have you here too, Jeff.
All right, so COLT Report. Jeff, maybe you could give a quick update on jump rope and explain what it is and what we're doing with it?
Soon as I finish indulging myself with it.
Sorry about that. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Perfectly. Yes, so the high school opened up the jump rope portal last week, and so we have immersed ourselves in the world of communicating student progress through the language of standards, and had a pretty successful opening of that portal. Some of you probably have children that you went in and, as did I, and interacted with the portal. Also, as we close out the trimester at the end of November, a lot of the middle levels will also be sending out reports and making the decisions about when to open up the portal for their parents as well. What we really liked, and I did a presentation for lead yesterday, is the data that we will now have that we haven't had in the past, an awful lot of data points and a lot of, some really important indicators around learning, some of which I shared the last time I was here with you, around grad standards and some of the other targets that we are interested in. So, we're pleased with the way that went and looking forward to the next steps.
Any questions?
Just a question on, so will we now just go to the portal, or will we still get the reports from the teachers every so often as well? I wasn't sure what was...
Right, yeah, I think the plan for this year is to still have reporting windows where the expectation is to communicate that as well to you for this year.
Thanks.
Mike, maybe you want to say something about the RFP document that you're developing?
So, you know, we talked about the website, and we'll have a new website for Champlain Valley School District on July 1st. We sort of talked a little bit about the process. So, we had a web committee, we kind of talked about the process, what we're gonna do, and we've put together an RFP. We're kind of reviewing the RFP now. We hope to send it out by early December, get the results back, and have an initial review of all the responses, select maybe two or three of the, what we think the best responses are, invite those companies to do a presentation. For the presentation, we would open it up to kind of the larger CSSU audience, and have people come to the presentation, and we'd have some kind of survey data collection to get everybody's input. What did you like about it? What didn't you see that you want in the website? Hopefully make a decision on a vendor by February 1st, so we can begin building the new website and have it live by July 1st. That's sort of what the process we're thinking now is gonna be.
And we've got a pretty good committee that's working on this with Mike, that includes some of the tech integrationists, myself, Bob, Greg Marino, and Larry Hamburg, who are sitting here. And it overlaps with the ecosystem work group that I spoke to you about last time. So, we've got a lot of people that have got their eyes on it, so, yeah. Colleen?
Last month, we talked about an email invite to Board members for input.
Yep. We talked about that today. We'll do that.
Okay, thank you.
Just a question that came up at Williston's PTO, you know, some staff about the transition with email addresses from the CSSU email address to CVSD email address. I know when we went through this before, there was some sort of transition where your old emails would continue to...
And that'll be the same way. We'll have a new email address. Probably the CVSDDT.org will go live around May 1st, mid-May. CSSU.org will work several years. So, they'll both work for a long period of time.
And finally, Mr. Bob, budget update.
I'm lucky enough to be on the agenda for a few minutes to talk about budget. You have in your hands the first draft budget, just printed about a half an hour ago, for the front page is, do you all have one in your hands?
No.
Anybody need? There's a stack up there. I'll wait till everybody has a copy, because it'll make no sense if...
Thanks, Amanda.
Thank you, Amanda. I owe ya. Front page, my, what I'm calling the front page is the fiscal year 18 proposed budget. It was created after an exhaustive bit of work on the part of Miranda and Cindy and others, and captures the, how the budget will look restructured in the CVSD organization that combines all schools. So, in some cases, it doesn't have the detail that you might have seen in, say, a Williston or a Shelburne school budget with budget lines for every team in the school or that kind of thing. So, this document will remain unchanged in structure. The bottom total might change as we figure out things we need to bring to your attention. You all wanted some sort of comparative. This is the budget rolled up as a single organization. On the backside is the warned budgets that voters approved the expenditure budget on, just put in columns, and where one could logically add them across, I did. Where I couldn't, I left something hanging out. So, for example, CVU has a number of entries that are unrelated to others, or St. George does. So, you'll see those. But generally, they add across the total of last year's warned budgets that voters approved in our community with $71,113. The warned budget is $75,747. To assist you, I will tell you that the percentage, because that's all you're going to do first, is 6.5% higher. I will warn you that there are two significant changes in the budget for this year. There is $1,282,518 in additional debt service that did not exist last year, and there's $977,000 of increased sped expenses that did not exist last year and will be offset roughly 50% by revenue when we get to the revenue page.
I'm sorry, what expenses?
The first expenses is the debt service, or in order of importance, Williston, Shelburne, and CVU. And then the other is the special ed increase year to year.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I missed that term.
So, you take those two out, and it gets down to about 3.3 or 3.4, depending on who does the math for you. And that's pretty close to what one would think is gonna come out of your budget assumptions, particularly with salary and benefits. We weren't, we don't have this on the agenda to answer lots of questions. I kidded with Amanda that I'll take three questions and then cut you off, because this is really, we need to do more work, put some meat around it as we hand it to the CVSD Finance Committee, and then put additional meat on it as we hand it to the CVSD Board. So, does anybody want to take advantage of one of those three questions?
(laughing). Okay, so the other thing we thought would be appropriate we cover tonight is give you
a glimpse of what the administrative team is thinking about as possible decision packets to put in front of the CVSD Board in a week, two weeks, or whenever that event occurs. So, we're gonna go around the room, and we're gonna share with you what we're working on to possibly convert to a document and then something the Board could consider. I have three items, so I'll go first. I have a Facilities Director, having responsibility for all the facilities across the new district. I have a Food Service Director, having similar responsibilities. Those two positions were talked about at length at the Act 46 Committee platform, and there's a need in that, or an expectation that you'll realize significant cost benefit by bringing it all together. You need someone working that to realize those cost savings, because if you leave it separated out and just hope for the best, I can guarantee you're not gonna, you're not gonna get what you're looking for. So, that's why those two positions are there. They're expected to, not in the first year, but shortly thereafter, begin to return in more than, in savings more than the costs that they needed to go in the budget. So, that's those two. And then I threw in a third, just because I was on a roll. I have a Transportation Director on the list as well. We have someone doing a comprehensive look at your transportation system and where savings could be realized, or things the Board should consider. I expect you'll get good stuff out of that, but we'll probably need someone to pick up the report and implement it in your organization. None of those three positions benefit me personally, because I won't be here.
Isn't there a fourth one, that it's like two people to replace you?
I couldn't argue with the sentiment. But, no, I didn't put that one in, yet. So, if we could go around the room, I think Megan, you're sort of next on the list.
Can I ask you another quick question? So, we get $150,000, is that right, from consolidation as an incentive from the state? Is that money we could apply towards salaries, or is it, does it have to be applied towards anything in particular, or?
The, Colleen, I'll come back to the other question that that creates when I touch it, but the $150,000 Elaine has already applied for, and we have already gotten. There aren't, there aren't generally restrictions on what it's used for. It's intended to cover the expenses transitioning to a new district, so it's broadly defined. There is a timeline with which it has to be spent, so we can't sit on the money for four or five years. But it's really free of some of the limitations on other grants we might get. You on the committee understand you got a $20,000 grant from the state to cover your expenses as a committee? Anything you didn't spend, you would get in this next grant. So, what actually happened when we closed out the $20,000 grant, they disallowed a chunk of expenses. We didn't argue with them, because whatever they disallowed, we were gonna get in the next grant anyway. So, the next grant is something like $138, and we have it in hand. And the things that conversation has kind of implied are gonna come out of that grant so far are the transportation study, the website expense to get to one website, and I'm probably missing one or two others that someone has chimed in and thought that they should come from that grant. Does that cover that?
Could I just add, for those on the study committee, based on Bob's explanation to me about the 20K from the state for the study grant, is that we kept our work within that budget, but there were things that were disallowed that we didn't know ahead of time, such as printing for communications or something like that. So, if people from the community want to know about the 20K, we kept within that. It may be additional money for legal, I don't know, but you think, Bob, we were within...
No, I think the grant, they were clear at the end, when we tried to get reimbursement, what the grant would cover and wouldn't. It wasn't necessarily clear before that, and they pretty much included anything that you all paid to your legal consultant or your group consultant, whatever Mike Ruiz was called, and they disallowed most everything else, so. But we felt it wasn't a big deal, and we just, because it's all gonna be made whole.
And I mention that, because it's in your financial management report, that something related to the study grant, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Eric?
I just had a question about those, you mentioned decision package for sort of deputies on food service and transportation and so forth.
Yep.
And I know people have been talking, I don't know if it's tongue in cheek, about maybe in the course of replacing you, it might be two people, or it might be, the job description might look different. So, I wonder if it makes sense to take that into account before we say we want to hire a transportation and a food, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
If that becomes an operations and a finance guy, maybe you don't...
Certainly. You're right on. Okay. Megan?
Okay, we are contemplating and having discussions about the possibility of an early education director that would oversee early learning partnerships, Act 166, and early childhood special education, partially to account for the magnitude increase we've had in the number of kids we serve over the past number of years without any staffing increase, but also to, similar to Bob's explanation, there are ways to become more effective and efficient with early childhood special ed service provision when we think of ourselves as one single entity with sites, as opposed to four different sites. And if we want to be able to realize those innovations, it will require someone with expertise and focus on just early ed. So, that's under discussion? That's a part-time position?
At the Subcommittee of the Champlain Valley School District, Human Resource, whatever our committee is called, you shared with us the increase in caseload. Do you remember that off the top of your head by any chance?
So, two parts of it, related to ELP, which is Act 166. We serve about 370 students in 45 programs right now. When we started, we served 108 students in 13 programs. So, that's a significant increase in the number of kids we serve without additional staffing. And the other increase is, at least one of our towns has increased by about two-thirds their number of special ed eligible preschool students. And so, we have this phenomenon where we have spikes in enrollment, and then dips and spikes, and up until this point, we just react to those dips and spikes by addressing staffing year to year, and this would help us be able to absorb those peaks and valleys as a system.
Thank you.
You wanna go next?
I can go next. So, I will have a decision package for a position that I'm calling Director of Educational Technology and Communications. And I took my lead on that from the pitch I made two years ago for a Director of Educational Technology. Just to remind you, we do have a .5 person at the SU, so this would be another .5. It was a recommendation from the audit that you had done several years ago. I think that that position, the person in that position could help coordinate all of our IT, not IT people, the instructional, technology instructional specialists. I can't remember what they call themselves now, but...
Integration.
Integration specialists, technology integration specialists. So, it would be that focus. It could be that we could start looking at that team the way we look at the school psychologists, for example. That that would be a team that could be deployed based on need, and that in the end, just like Bob said, might end up realizing some savings. But the other part of that position would also be then, we have a lot of data. We get data from all of our systems. We don't have a person in our system to really take that data and turn it into a story that's understandable by everyone at a glance, to develop a dashboard that would be interactive that people could use. So, it would be really a focus on those two parts, coordinating the tech integration specialists and the data piece and communications, and I know that we're having some conversations about contracting that out, so this would be a possibility of doing that.
Jeff? Oh, there's Cindy. Sorry. Hold on.
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah, Kathy.
A question. Can you elaborate a little bit more, talking about contracting that out? Did I just hear you say?
No. Well, remember in September, Susan Holson came to the CVSD Board and discussed the possibility of a communication plan. So, there is a Communication Subcommittee of the CVSD Board that is considering doing a RFP for a contract for communicating the work that we're doing. And you might remember that that was a pitch a couple of years ago, and that's been a conversation every year at the retreat about how do we do a better job with communication, given the capacity that we have for doing that work? Okay. Thank you. Mm-hmm.
The last decision package from CSSU is to consider a middle-level athletic director or a student activities director modeled partially on what the high school has in Dan Shepherdson. Currently, it's a stipend position in each of the middle-level schools, which means people are basically fitting it in on top of their full-time job. Those jobs become much more complicated with the concussion protocols, and hazing harassment and bullying, and other training needs. So, we're looking at, it doesn't make sense to have one person coordinating that for all the kids.
Eliminating the stipend for anybody in the buildings?
I'm sorry?
Eliminating the stipend for...
Correct. There'll still have to be some payment at the local building, because as much as Shep can't be at every event, there's no way the one person could be at all four locations, so we have to figure that part out. But the overall coordination hopefully could be central.
Did you say an FTE?
We're still working on that. Yeah, I guess it's good to remind everybody that this is the first blush of hearing about these, and they'll go through, you know, a few transformations, or, you know, maybe elimination even, based on input that we get from different people, or based on, you know, to your comment, Eric, earlier, that we start thinking about it in a different way. So, this is really the first time that we're sharing these.
Jeff has good news?
(inaudible).
What?
I don't have...
Oh, I thought you were gonna...
Some might characterize you.
We actually know that you do have good news. I guess you are letting the cat out of the bag.
Jeff has a decision package that goes in the other direction.
Oh, you wanted me to share that?
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's good news.
Yes, two years ago, you approved a data position to assist George Martin, who's our data manager, and we have eliminated that position, quite frankly, because George is so good at the job he does, and he's been able to automatize a lot of the work that had to be manual in the past, and we just see other opportunities that are more important, so we are eliminating that position.
Thank you.
Man, you kept teeing it up for me, and I missed it.
Yeah, no, but that's really important for you all to know, that we're not always just looking about, like, what's the next thing? That when we stumble across something, that we go, "Wow." We had a real crying need for that two years ago, and we recognize we don't now, so.
All right. So, is that the end of the COLT Report?
That is it. That is the end of the COLT Report.
So, we'll move on to the CVSD debrief. I guess I'll just say that we met two weeks ago, and we had a conversation with CVU Board members who gave us a debrief on responsibilities and concerns that may transfer over to the CVSD Board from the CVU Board. We talked about our budget, the Leadership Committee. I think at that point, Elaine mentioned that the Board Chairs Meeting that had been going on, on the first Tuesday of every month of Board Chairs from the CSSU, is no longer going to happen. There's not a big agenda for it, and the board work is sort of ramping down, and it's hard to have that meeting on the same day as the CVSD Board.
I think it's mostly because there's no agenda for that group anymore.
Yeah, so, and in parallel with that, we're having a conversation about how can we build a similar Leadership Committee for the CVSD Board going forward? So, we're having that conversation and working on that. We also had an executive session where we discussed negotiations strategy, so. Is that everything?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I think you took good.
Yep. Next is the VSBA Conference Debrief, and who went to that?
Colleen and I were there.
Okay.
And Cindy. No, you weren't there. Megan. Megan, Colleen, and I were there. Sorry, Megan. It was a long time ago.
It was within the past month, wasn't it?
I know, it was in the past month, but a lot has happened since then.
It was very good.
That was a really good conference, a really good conference. The first day was Andy Hargraves, who was a professor at Boston College, doing, the theme was leading from the middle, so all about collaboration, and how much better you can do your work, and how more authentic the work is when you work together. And honestly, I don't know about you, Colleen, but I, Megan and I certainly sat there and felt like we do that. We work at that, being collaborative, making sure that whatever the level of work that we're doing, that we involve others, and we're open to learning from everyone. And the second day was on implicit bias, and that was also really excellent, two people from Ohio State University just helping to demonstrate right on the stage how the biases that we have that we're not even aware of, and how that then plays into how we operate within our systems. I had been to a regional educational lab meeting in Manchester, New Hampshire on the previous Tuesday that was on social-emotional learning, and it was amazing to me how those two things just totally intersect, that, so, it was really good.
I'd just like to add that I thought it was one of the best VSBA, VSAT conferences I've attended. The workshops and the presentations, keynote speakers were outstanding. The state did a really good job, and I think the emphasis on equity, diversity, and just, you know, just reiterate what Elaine said about the implicit bias conversations, you know, so much of it was non-threatening. People didn't have to be in a defensive position, it's just recognizing that it exists, you can't help it, we've all got it, and so, how do we negotiate that, and being sensitive to it within the school system? So, I would advocate that at some point our Board, CVSD Board, continue that conversation in some way. I'd also like to add that I represented each of the Boards at the VHI meeting, where the, one of the policy questions before the Assembly was whether to change, two of the positions right now that were held by the Vermont NEA, there was a request and a suggestion, recommendation to change one of them to VSBA representation. We didn't have a VSBA representative on the VHI Board, and the Assembly agreed almost unanimously to make that switch, and that was a question, we didn't know whether that would happen or not. So, Nicole Mace, who's the Executive Director of the VSBA, was nominated and proved to represent Boards on the VHI Board, and I think that'll serve us well over the next however long they, it was a three-year term. They changed their terms from six years to three years as well.
So, as long as we're talking about VSBA, that gives me an opportunity to circle back to the kudos, and mention that Vicki Nelson and Kathy Batty, who are school counselors and she were two of the presenters at this conference, and they did a workshop on how to become an equity champion. That was, they did two different workshops. And because, bad on me that I didn't mention this, Bob Mason was recognized at the Annual School Nutrition Association of Vermont for his longstanding support for school meal programs. And I'll just say this, I saw the email that the, it was Leo La Force who nominated Bob, and forwarded to me the email he got back from the organization, who said, "We couldn't, we've been waiting for Bob to be nominated, because there isn't anybody in the whole state who is more deserving." And that's the truth, so, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to 5.4, the first quarter FMR. You'd read the summary page and look at some of the differentials. The one thing that caught my eye there was the addition of two vehicles that you had to buy to support special education. I was just curious, like, how did we buy two vehicles on such short notice?
You as a Board approved the purchase of those vehicles. The funding is, comes out of the transportation budget, but then gets reimbursed by charging every school for the use of those vehicles. So, over the course of two years, three years, it'll be more than covered.
Okay.
But they were desperately needed in the right, the need for the vehicle was more of a van size, rather than, as we have been in the past three or four years, sending large 90-passenger vehicles around to do homeless transportation, so. Megan and I, in conversation with Ken, thought it was exactly the right thing to go... every school for the use of those vehicles. So, over the course of two years, three years, it'll be more than covered. But they were desperately needed in the right, the need for the vehicle was more of a van size rather than, as we have been in the past three or four years, sending large 90-passenger vehicles around to do homeless transportation. So, Megan and I, in conversation with Ken, thought it was exactly the right thing to go do and adjust our plane of attack.
Cool. Any other questions on the FMR? Eric, you have one question about the FMR? No? Must have been a good one. All right. So, we'll move on to 6.0, discussion matters. 6.1, want to have a short conversation about present-day school environment and bullying. This is a thing that Kelly sent to me late last week. We wanted to ask Elaine if, in the schools presently, have you seen any uptick in bullying with respect to the last week of current events?
We have not.
Okay. All right.
I have.
Okay.
You at school?
Just to be aware, and I didn't know, I mean, they're kids. It was in the central school.
Yeah.
There was chanting in the hallway, coming out, and I just think that there should just be a sensitivity around it, so.
So, that's not something that would come to me?
Yeah, so I just didn't know. I actually, I was just reading about the uptick and then we all were, I think in our inboxes, got the National School Association Board letter about the increase in election-related violence around the country. So, I was just curious, other than sort of kids being kids, right, are we experiencing that? And if we were experiencing, would the board ever find out about that? So, I emailed Dave and Elaine because I thought, I'd like to know, even if it's just copycat, immaturity, or if it's something more substantial, I just think at this time we should, we should know that that's going on, so.
Well, I think that there is a pretty strong policy in place with pretty good checks and balances in, I don't know the act that came up last year, but I know that the bullying, hazing, and harassment policy has, you know, required follow-ups and I think that we would encourage all administrators and school-level administrators to just be on lookout like they normally would, but also to make sure that if frequency does increase, not to put the policy by the side because it would be too difficult.
Yeah, and we wouldn't. And we do yearly training on this to make sure that everybody understands that.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Great.
Do we want to have any proactive communication about, so, okay, bullying is something you don't do. I have a three and five-year-old, you have to tell them what to do. Otherwise, they're focusing on, don't do this, don't do this, and they do it. Do we want to have any proactive communication on perhaps acceptable behavior because it's coming up in conversations, the elections? So, how do people talk about it respectfully?
Yeah, so I think that just part and parcel of what we do in schools is proactive. So, all of our schools are engaged in positive behavior intervention and supports or MTSSB. You know, those are the two terms that they use for it. But that's all about focusing on positive behaviors and if a student is exhibiting negative behavior, to treat it as an opportunity for education. So, I think that that's kind of the basis of how we deal with that.
I just wanted to kind of talk to Kelly or everybody about, you said you didn't know if it was kids being kids or copycat behavior or what. I think that's just as bad as what the real behavior is because other children see that and feel that. And so, my feeling would be that that would be something that needed to be addressed at that time, so, whatever that kind of behavior is that is being experienced anywhere.
And what we don't know is whether or not it was addressed. It might have been.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know that.
Somebody explain to me what the behavior was?
Sure. I was picking up my son. I was at the front of the school. It was a group of just kids. It was just a big group, mass of kids exiting school as they do, and they were just chanting, Trump, 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 Trump. But in front of them was a whole other little group of kids. And when my child got in the car, he was asking me about it and I said, "Well, they're excited, it's elections, it's this, it's that." And I understand that and that's the behavior and the explanation that I gave to my child. But I think going forward, and then I saw this, this notice from the National School Board Association and I thought, okay, well, maybe it was just election excitement, but now is it something more and is it, is it there? And so, it just made me think, that's all. And I just wanted an awareness of it, that's all. And I didn't think anyone was at danger. I would have said something or I would have come in and certainly said something to Mr. Marino.
Right, because definitely that probably would not rise to the level of bullying. Right? It just, it wouldn't.
So, it was? No, no, no. I just felt like again, like excitement around a thing. I didn't think it was targeted at a particular person. It was just an awareness, you know, kind of a thing, that's all.
Was it on Election Day or was it?
No.
Because voting was in.
Yes, no, no, yes, and it was not, yeah. No, 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 no. It was separate and aside from.
All right. Well, I appreciate the comments back. Move on to 7.1, action matters, and that is to accept the independent audit. That was found on about 100 pages of our 117-page packet this week. So, okay, I had a motion to accept the independent audit?
The move.
Second, okay. Any discussion?
Could someone explain to me the process by which it got here in front of us?
Can I do, explain two things? One is, those of you who have a better memory than I do might remember that two years ago we changed it over and had them all approved at the SU. In conversations with two legal counsels during the consolidation discussion, they recommended that it would probably be important in the last two years of existence of all the legacy boards for the legacy board to approve their audit. So, we made the decision to switch it back to where you're each approving your own audit for these last two years of your existence. You'll do the same thing next year and it will be the last bit of business you do.
That's how we get to hang on to you until December of 2017.
So, that's how they landed here. They landed in the form that are here because we made a decision to get them out in front of you and try and get all that work done in the November timeframe, which is your last meeting before you go on break until February of next year, which is too late. So, we put them in your packets, we put the PowerPoint that we might have presented to some committees who were interested in the process and the full audit in your packet. The audits are clean. There are no findings. You're in, you're in great shape in comparison to some other district across the state in that you don't have that kind of indication from your auditors. They're very happy with what your bookkeepers and finance group presented to them and quite satisfied that it's without question a good audit in their view. We take advantage of the time we have with them to get a list of things we need to be doing a little differently and a little better on the margins. And so, the 10 items that Elaine and I got are probably eight student activity account observations and two principals fund observations that are those accounts that sometimes lack discipline day in, day out. So, we're working those, but you have good audits right across the board and so that's why they're there.
So, those findings don't appear in the report?
They are recommendations. We take advantage of having that expertise to say, Ron, you've got a lens on our work that no one else has. If you were, you know, what would be your next body of work to kind of tighten the process? And so, he's done this every year, we've engaged him and so did Sheila with Father Gilsegall and Valley.
Does this board still have an audit committee?
I don't know, has this board had an audit committee? Oh, unless it did the last two years when we, we pulled the group together to review all the audits, yes.
So, we don't have that in place now or we do or did?
I didn't take advantage of it if you say you still have it in place, but I don't think we had you form that in March when we did committee formations. So, I honestly would say it doesn't exist, but. CVU does have a finance committee and they, the finance committee there looked at their audit prior to tonight's meeting. If you do have questions, get them my way. I don't necessarily need to say to your auditor that they are done until I have any lingering questions answered. So, if you want to take advantage of that opportunity as a way to address anything you might have circled if you looked through the 42 pages. I'm more than happy to do that.
All right. So, any further discussion?
Well, yeah, I got to ask the question. That's why I asked the question because I read through the audit today and I don't disagree with anything you're reporting as their conclusions, but I read that very quickly in part because I thought someone else had already looked at it and was going to be able to sit here as a director and tell me, yeah, it's fine, Keith, go ahead and approve it.
Okay.
So, that's, that's, that's what's at the root of my question and I'm not saying I'm not prepared to take action on this and vote in favor of it. I just want to make sure everybody else is cognizant of that and that we make that conscious decision.
I kind of had the same reaction myself because two years ago, up until a couple years ago, it used to be the vice chairs, for a few years we had the vice chairs be part of the audit committee. And then we identified a board member from each of the local boards to sit on the audit committee and Stacy represented Heinsberg, so.
So, let me ask you-
I thought that was still in place, quite frankly.
So, would this work? Could this group make a motion that pending review of an audit committee, they would approve? Is that, Cindy, is that a legal kind of motion?
A little odd, but.
I'm just thinking that because this-
The better sequence is we'll arrange to have, you designate your audit committees, we'll pull them together, we'll get that step cleared, we'll get it back to you, and then you're going to have to come together as a board for acceptance of the audit.
Because we don't-
And we can, we created all this, so I'll manage the process to get it done now, but.
And I, it's just, you know, we went, a couple of years ago, we went through the process of saying we wanted to put an RFP out for other auditors and we were very thoughtful in that decision to kind of move things around. So, I think it might help us with our public communications as well to have some kind of affirmation of our processes.
So, maybe I'm going to intercept you, but on the flip side, there was something in our packet that was listed under an action matter that said we were going to act on this and so we should have read it and understood it and looked at the recommendations.
And I read it and I didn't have questions, but as Keith noted in the past, we've also known that we've had a key contingency of the board who dove deeply into the audit. And having been part of an audit committee in the past myself, I know that it meant sitting around a table and asking questions in detail and getting to a sense of comfort with it so that if anyone asked me a question, I could respond to it. If someone from the community asked me a question about the audit, I'd have to step back and say, oh, I need to get back to you.
And even though this board isn't scheduled to meet again until February, the CVSD board is meeting quite a few times between now and then. So, and there are seven of you sitting around the table who are on the CVSD board, so we could maybe schedule the first 10 minutes to be a CSSU board meeting and take action after the audit committee has met and reviewed it.
So, that was going to be my question. What I, I mean, I didn't, I went through it because I thought we were going to act on it tonight, but if everybody feels more comfortable, what's the timeframe, Bob? When does it need to be approved by?
It needs to be approved in time to go to your printers in January.
We can do that.
Okay.
Normally, I like to give them all this a little early because some of the other stuff goes a little late.
Okay. We have a December 6th meeting?
Is there, you said CVU looked at it? CVU Finance Committee looked at it?
CVU Finance Committee looked at the CVU audit.
I mean, I looked through the CSSU audit and the Heinsberg audit and they looked remarkably similar. So, if there's someone here from CVU who feels comfortable speaking about their review that would give everyone comfort, I could be convinced to go that way as well.
I mean, do you think that some people-
That's me.
Are interested.
Raised behind, raised behind you too.
Eric?
I was there.
And we, I mean, it, we knew, we talked to Bob and based upon the PowerPoint that you saw in there, like what our duties and responsibilities were because we had seen this before last week. And he told us exactly where, you know, the importance parts of where you need to focus your attention and we reviewed it. I had no problem with the audit. I have to admit, I'm not a numbers person, so, you know, I, and I read through it again today and the recommendations, those are the ones I haven't seen.
Those I went through kind of in a description.
Right.
They're in a letter to Elaine and I, they are not part of an audit.
They were not part of the audit, but, you know, we talked a few, he gave us some of the overviews of what, you know, we need to focus on and I agree because those, what are they, co-curricul-
Student activities.
Student activity accounts. And those were always kind of shaky, but Shep is doing a great job cleaning them all up and so I feel comfortable with our audit.
I also looked at it again last night, worked through this packet for the CVU board meeting tonight and I was happy with it.
Ray, do you have any input because you're on the finance committee also?
You know, I was pretty upset last week about the election.
It wasn't the question.
No, I didn't read it. Good context. Whoever wrote it majored in obfuscation, I guess.
You don't know too many counts, right? The convention, I think it is probably best practice to have an audit committee if that's something that gives people comfort, which it should do. And it gives us a chance through the audit committee to ask questions that we think are relevant and to spend time with it in a way that's more meaningful than, if we have time, I think that's probably the maybe more disciplined way to approach it.
We can make it work. I think we should move forward.
Okay. So, should we designate that audit committee or?
You needn't designate the audit committee, but.
Table the action.
Table the action on the-
Or postpone.
Or postpone.
Postpone the action on accepting the audit. And is there one member from each town that should be part of the audit committee? Vice chair or?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I was late. You know, we have a, on the Heinsberg board, a member who is an auditor, so.
She's on that committee and will continue today.
Yeah, so just to make my point, I, you know, my comfort level is, is I know she'll often do it, at least from the Heinsberg side, I like to put it in her hands, I know she would, she would, I'm quite confident she would volunteer to review, so.
Okay.
My point is, you know, that I think, to these guys' point, I think that if it's not a big time killer for Bob and Elaine, then I, that's what I'd like to do.
We can do it.
Yeah.
Well, can, should each respective board appoint their own at their meetings instead? We shouldn't pick those here, we could pick the CSSU audit members.
All right, so that'll be in action for everybody at 7:00 tonight to send Elaine a designee. Great. All right.
And before we move on, can I just say thank you, Bob, for overseeing this really massive, complex part of our work and the good results that come out of this, so thank you for that.
Could I just clarify so I don't disappoint you? The next step I take, did you just agree that you're going to designate one member from each community to a board who will do all the audits and recommend approval? Sure.
Yes.
Okay.
To a committee, but yeah.
Yeah, that seems like the simpler.
Which, which is, I think, to be consistent with what we've done over the past couple of years.
Okay.
So, could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So, moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Confirm next meeting dates, February 21st for this board. And the CVSD board has a December 6th meeting in Charlotte at 5:30.
And no board chairs.
Yeah.
Is the board chair meeting on the 8th?
No.
That's all gone?
That's not.
Okay.
So, with that, we will move to our common topic that I think Elaine will introduce.
I will introduce our dear friend, former colleague, Val Gardner, whom most people here know. Hi, Val. Val is-
I'm back. But not with you.
So, Val is here this evening to talk to us about Community Connections. She does a course at St. Mike's on Community Connections. I've heard from some of our very own principals and some of my colleagues about the work that she does in that class and how helpful it is and, you know, just even this fall, I was having a conversation- And, you know, just even this fall, I was having a conversation with a principal about what was going on in his school. And he was sharing some ideas and I said, "Oh, those are great, I need to share those with everyone else." And he said, "Well, that was from Val's class." So it's kinda the common sense, practical way that Val has of approaching things that I think will benefit us as we think about moving from this board to the big umbrella board of CVSD. Thank you so much for being here. A pleasure.
You got a caveat on me? The work, the class that I have at St. Mike's is really for administrators and aspiring school leaders. I would offer that that's different than how boards connect. That's a bias I carry, all right? And it is, their work is fundamentally different than board work. So the concepts are the same, but the actual target work is different. And I would just put that out. The other thing is, is I'm not into presenting. I am a teacher, so you're gonna have to work, all right? So this is gonna be just basically connected with the community. And the intention tonight is to really look, what have you done? You've done stuff in your community and it works to some degree. So we're gonna take some time for you as a new board, a collection of former boards, to begin thinking about, as we move forward, what's worked in the past and what do we need to keep doing as we merge? Then, what are some of the implications? What are some of your worries? What are some of your hopes based on the merger that's occurring? And then, what's the commitment to learn? The intention here is not for you to walk out with a plan. The intention is for you to decide, is this work you wanna do? All right? So we're not gonna be generating this tremendous work plan for you. It is simply gathering some ideas, getting you to talk to each other, and then making a commitment to move forward. Make sense? Anything you were hoping you would get tonight that isn't there? All right. So what will happen is you'll get a chance to say, "I was hoping we got this and you didn't get it." Where do you begin planning? So here's what I'd like you to do. First off, connection with the community is on a continuum. And the continuum is, I simply go out and tell people what we're doing. I know what it is and I'm just gonna tell you. That's at one end. Then all the way through is the idea of community engagement. And community engagement means you are not the expert. You are engaging with the community to get a shared vision, a shared understanding of something. Two very different ends of the continuum. In the middle, you can have decision-making. There's an implied that if you're at the end of community engagement, that there is a sense that they own it. So that becomes really important. And there are reasons to do things at every point on the continuum. There are times you wanna just tell people. There's an annual meeting on Tuesday in March. But when you're trying to figure out what the values are, you wanna engage the community. So that concept becomes really important. And it becomes important for you as a board to figure out what role the community needs to play in what levels of decisions. Otherwise, it gets really messy. It's messy anyway, but it gets even messier. So here's what I'd like you to do. I'm gonna ask, pose some questions and give you some time to talk among yourselves. My assumption is you're all from different boards? Is that a fair assumption? Good. I'd like you to get with two other board members who are not from the same community. Okay? You may need to get up, move around, go find a spot, all right? I also, you've been sitting for a while, so I'd encourage you to get up at some point and move. And here's what I'd like you to do. Here's some prompts. I want you to talk with each other about these prompts. And sort of keep notes, because I'm gonna have you come back and share your thinking. And I'm gonna ask Sandy to take notes, all right? So the first prompt, what are your current levels of interactions with members of your community? And I'm talking broadly. Community at large. All the folks in your town. How about with parents? What level of communication or engagement do you have with parents? What's your current level of dealing with your principal or principals? And then how about staff? When do you reach out to them? How do you do that? When do you hear from them? And how does that happen? I'm gonna give you about 15 or 20 minutes. Break out, address those questions. Really be sure that you're not just talking generally about the community at large. You have a whole community you're dealing with. Okay? Set? Pop up, just move away from the table? Do we have to go around group by group by group? And we'll start with the community at large.
Oh, assistant, Kelly.
What are you feeling? How does it work? How about this group?
Well, for the community at large, I think amongst the boards that we have here, we talk about really how we, a lot about how we inform our community. We do that via social media, via our local paper, via Budget Buddies. You know, by the time. And that's a much more higher level of engagement. So those are the types of activities that we do for the community at large.
Okay? More on the information end with a movement towards... Yeah, okay. Great.
But Budget Buddies are moving a little bit.
Right. They get into decision and...
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. How about the next group?
I think we said most of ours was through the budget. Front porch forum on the corner, occasional board corner on the newspapers, but nothing truly proactive, more reactive.
Or one-way?
Right.
Yeah. Next group, the group in the back?
Oh, what hasn't been... Oh, yeah, so presentations at town meeting, front pages. We sent out some mailings during the Act 46 stuff that was connected. Oh, and presentations to the select...
Presentations to the select boards? And what were those around?
So it's been for Act 46 and also for tax incentives.
Okay, and was that every town, every select board?
No, it was actually, one was a presentation that I requested and one that they requested.
Okay, so one town versus with that being a process?
Oh, no, no, we all met.
Other towns do it.
We all did. We had a collaborative effort to go to every select board and educate them about this particular thing. And we used a common presentation to do it.
Great, okay, thanks.
Yeah.
What was the question again? What was the question?
Community engagement.
Well, I'm trying to find out, are you asking for how do we engage the community or how does the community engage us? Because if the answer, if that question is the latter, what our initial reaction was, well, we only hear from them when something's wrong.
Okay. So there's the receptivity of when the community at large. And is that the community or is it a subsection of the community?
It depends on what the problem is. If it's a macro problem, you're gonna hear from a lot of members of the community.
What would be an example of a macro?
The last one I can remember is when we did the grade reconfiguration. We heard from a lot of members of the community about that.
Were those parents or was it grandparents and the senior citizens and...
Obviously, those that were more, had a more vested interest in the school, parents or grandparents, but...
Okay.
Yeah.
But not the local guy in the corner?
No.
Okay.
No. We hear from, we hear from those folks through the budget process.
Okay.
Sometimes they'll show up at budget meetings or Budget Buddies or, you know, the annual meeting.
Okay. So there's the community at large that comes into you and lets you know generally when something may not be comfortable or questioning. And then there's the other, which is the outreach part, which is budget. Question, when you do those hearings, where are they held usually? Schools.
At the school.
Schools. Interesting. You gotta come to us.
But I think in some of our communities, I know like Greg and our board chair in Williston will go to the Rotary and give presentations and things like that.
Great.
So...
Great.
And I think you do that in Charlotte too.
We went to the Rotary last year.
Part of it is that the school buildings themselves are a huge point of meeting for a lot of the communities. Like Williston doesn't have another large meeting point like that that the town often has, besides town hall.
Absolutely. I would offer that the schools are a very convenient place. I would also offer for some members of the community that can't get there. It's at night. A large segment, don't drive. So I would offer that as you think about what you do, there, you know, you need to really be thinking about, is this about just people coming to us or is it us needing to find ways to get out into the public?
So one last thing we did last year, I think in every community, again around Act 46, it was a big deal, was community coffees. Pick a place that everybody can call in in the morning and hopefully something.
Yeah, I would offer that Act 46 had you move out of your comfort zone and out of your normal way of operating because it required a different level of engagement with your community than you've had for the last 100 years. Or 50 years, or however long you've had to vote for your budget. So as you think about that, there are things that you've been doing that are really successful. I would push you a little bit to say, it cannot be just you receiving it. If you're truly gonna engage the community, think of the things you did to deal with Act 46. You went out. You targeted groups. You thought about groups differently than the people who read the newspaper. Social medium, media came up a lot, for people using front page forum. Ups and downs with that one. Okay?
Well, I think one of the things we were talking about was how important as a consolidated district it's gonna be to make sure that communication is uniform and consistent across all of our towns. And not just one town is getting the word out, but the others aren't. You know, I think we need, it's one district, all the towns, all the front porch forums, all the community newspapers. That information and those messages need to go out to everybody.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
We've even gone so far as with the CVSD board, we're still in the school systems, but we're changing our meeting monthly. So instead of just meeting here every month as we do, we'll go to the five towns.
How many of you get... I'm gonna switch a little bit. So anything else around community at large? One of the things I hear, I've done some work with boards who are in the merger process. And one of it, we'll talk about this a little bit later, but it's really... All eyes are on you from communities in terms of what's gonna be the same. Will I have access? Will I know? Do I have the same level of access? Now, in some communities, the level of access is what I would consider a little extreme. What I was hearing here was there seems to be a very clear process for dealing with many of what parents have for concerns. But there's a worry that's coming out, which I had elected my board member. I would see him at Lantman's, I'd see him at Shaw's. I'd see him, you know, at the library. Now what's that mean? And I would offer, it requires you as a board to be really thoughtful about how you move beyond your past practice of engaging the community, to be much more deliberate about it. Moving is helpful, but you're now going from my principal to our principals. It's different. How about parents? What's the connection to parents? Are you connected to parents as board members?
Can I just ask a question about community before we move on?
Sure.
One of our challenges, and I was on the Act 46 merger committee and the communications committee, was actually having the engagement of the community. And so do you, can you offer some suggestions on how to get the community? I mean, I felt like we were trying to be as free-thinking as possible of where and how to address and get the information out. And I was actually surprised at the lack of overall participation.
Yeah, it takes a real intention. I think the other piece is, is to be really clear why you wanna engage them. What's the purpose? And I would also say, it's much less effective when it's a large group. It's much more effective if you're talking about, let's have some living room meetings, where we're talking about this issue. What's affordable now for us? The trick is to not get into programming for the board. You don't wanna go out and begin hearing that this department is just amazing and this department or this school is terrible and you've gotta do something about it. That really, for the bias of me and for what you have with good governance, that is the principal's and superintendent's job. Your job is much broader and much more involved with, what are our aspirations? What do we want for our kids? How does that look in this community? How does it happen? And so it requires a little bit different way of looking at it than, we're gonna do a community engagement meeting on Tuesday night and invite everybody to this. It really, there are people out there who do some really thoughtful and comprehensive ways of engaging the community in what are called light touches and heavy touches. Light touches could be, you put out, and I'm gonna give you the example, it's like a petition. You put it out at all the stores and you say, which one makes sense to you? If you had to pick out of these three, which one will you take? If you're trying to get an idea on something in terms of where you want the schools to go. Then you may get a group of people that you do a heavy touch with. They're gonna commit to a study circle and think about in terms of proficiency-based learning, what that's gonna do in terms of schools? That it's no longer just 12 years? It's gonna be different. So do you begin talking with the community and doing some heavier touches with study circles? Or inviting all of the select boards from all of towns together? Or you go meet with the fire department? It's different, but it is a very different focus to board work. You move away from running schools to really engaging the community. And that's where you do the work.
So, playing devil's advocate a little bit.
Great.
I think we've done a really good job over the past number of years differentiating roles and responsibilities. We've got clear agendas for boards. We do policy, we do budgets, and we hire good leadership. We stay away from management of school and designing curriculum.
Yep.
That's what we hire administrators for. So we've done a really good job with that. And then as far as communications, you know, one of the things that we do, having this broadcast right now, people can access it that way, moving around and so forth. Act 46, we did everything we could to get information out. And a lot of it was one-way, granted. We have a smaller board. So going forward, I think the expectation for our board members needs to be tempered by the consideration that it's a volunteer board, which is one of the reasons we're having discussion about, should we have a, some kind of position related to communication so that it can be coordinated? But I think you've hit the nail on the head. We have a really big challenge in front of us with the community about that expectation of access to board work. And how do we do that? And, you know, any ideas you can give us? You know, we understand the challenge, but, you know, being clear that we do policy, we do budget. we do budget. And what's the decision-making where we're really looking for input?
That becomes what your new board role becomes. What, how much time do you spend on policy now? How much time do you listen to reports and read reports? How do you get to know what's really going on in schools? Schools, not your school. So what's the format that needs to be in play as you move forward to keep you informed, to be able to say when you're in Lantman's or Shaw's or wherever, somebody says, man, they're doing this great, yeah, but you know what? They're also doing that in Shellot, they're doing it in Shelburne, they're doing it here, and you should see what's going on. So part of your work as a board is to keep in touch with the learning that's going on and what that looks like in your schools now, not in your school. But that shouldn't consume all of your time. And so you have to decide what's your work plan. And some boards decide part of their work plan as part of Act Forty-Six is to be truly engaged with the community in some way. It's different than going out and talking about the budget. Okay? We're not coming to you because it's four weeks between town, before town meeting and we're coming to you. You may be going in September and saying, what you worried here? What are you excited about with Act Forty-Six? What are you worried about? And begin to gather that data in some way. And then you're elected, so you get to come back and say, this is what it means for us. This is what we need to be doing.
From my perspective, the challenges we face as boards sometimes is we try to engage, we don't get engagement back. And, you know, the conversation I've had with, I think, Keith and Colleen, I think we, in the Heisberg Board, we had this conversation is, I think that happens because of, I think it's the whole, all the boards in total, but I'll just speak them on personally, I think it's the same for all of them, is the community trusts us and we got, kids are happy in schools, we got great superintendent leadership, and people have a lot of things on their plate. It's not top of mind. So try to engage. I know we have and we've done this and it's just, you can't bring, you can't make the horse drink water, you know?
So I think that's absolutely true. And most people are going to, not going to add on one more thing. One more night out? No thanks. So how do you go where people are? I heard people say, we went to the Rotary. Great place to go. There are other places like that. The other piece is it needs to be a commitment by the board. And if things are cruising, they're cruising. But I think the other piece that I'm going to bring up here is you're merging. And those behaviors that you've had as individual boards have worked. I don't think you can assume that because it worked locally, you can assume that it will work collectively unless it's intentional. That's an assumption on my part. It may. And that would be great. But I also know Vermonters, being one, and having spent a lot of time in some school districts that have merged where there's a big worry. I would offer, this board behaves in a true governance way. And so you're not going to see as many issues as come up where there've been very different boards. An example I would give, one board was a governance model, the other board were on hiring committees, choosing the carpets, determining snow days, and they merged as boards. Whoo! Because think of what the expectations are in those communities. So you're starting from a very different place. And what I'd offer is you can make the choice to engage with the community. I would sense that, given the merger, there may be more intention that needs to be played to it.
Seems to me that we need a common issue. I mean, there has to be a purpose and a reason for people to show up, as Bill noted. You know, everything could be going smoothly, people are busy. So if we could come up with something, let's say, something related to how we move kids from one building to another building, if there's limited choice in that, and that, you know, for example, might be a problem that can be brought to a larger community. That seems to me that there might be, if we could come up with an issue that could bring focus.
I would, that's a great piece. The caveat I would give is make sure it's board work and board focus.
Exactly.
Rather than administrative.
I really, you know, made a note of your notion about bringing all the select boards together from around the towns and all the town clerks. Because I know one of the meetings that Bob and I had last year with all the town clerks in preparation for Act Forty-Six when we went to, you know, do that work, we really felt that was so productive and made such a huge difference in how they, who are in very important positions in the community, then are talking to other people in the community. So select boards, fire chiefs, town librarians, town clerks, meeting with them to, at any point that you can, when there is a purpose, like we're going to have town meetings, they're going to look different this year.
Yep.
Bringing them together. Select boards to just say, here's what our budgets are looking like. What are your budgets looking like? Town librarians, here's what we're doing, here's how, you know, library services are looking different. Because I don't think you can underestimate the value of who they are in each of the communities and they're speaking to everybody else. And how that then becomes the greater, you know, understanding of who we are as a system, that we are, meeting with other people, we're engaged, we're listening, we're wanting to learn from them as much as inform them. So I thought that was a great idea.
And there's some symbolism in it. There really is. And I think you have to be aware of some of the symbols that you have to be pretty intentional about now. And I think you're talking about, you're moving, you're moving meetings. I would be very thoughtful who meets with whom. That if you're the only one going to town X and you're the rep from town X, it's reinforcing symbolically that that's the connection.
So one thing that we have really discussed is that when we're talking about all these channels we're communicating out and, like, you're kind of getting at this. So.
It's kind of like noise on a radio. Until you've like tuned it and focused it in and you've got that one common voice, it's just noise. So I really think we might want to be more maybe targeted and specific in our communications. Because I know one of the feedback items that came up in March, for the March election, was transparency in Williston. And if you're looking at a muddle or a mix of all this noise in communication, it's not clear, it's not transparent what you're trying to communicate and get across. So perhaps it's our new school website, perhaps it's maybe like three targeted communications, but finding a way to like clarify our voice, make it singular but more common between the outlets that I think would probably really help as well.
If you set goals, how do you keep the community set on what your goals are? And how does the community have some input into what those goals are, if needed? So one of the things that I moved to right now, just looking at time, you merged, you did some studies, you did some work. What are the implications or what are you hearing about the merged district? Nothing? So when you went out, people were saying, great.
I think people are waiting.
So what are they waiting for? Do you know what they're waiting for?
They're waiting to see the savings.
They're waiting to see the savings, but what else? Is it just savings? How it's going to benefit the kids? Tax bills. So part of what you need to be thinking about, what are some of the worries and what are some of the opportunities that you have here? And how do you keep communication and transparency going? And how do you go out and find out what is happening in terms of people's worries?
So when I got worried, just as we started this meeting, one of the fears we heard from several community members was you're going to all of a sudden create this big infrastructure at the central office.
And so what did we hear at the beginning was different decision packets about adding infrastructure at the central office. Well, that's fine if we're creating changes at the other levels that are creating some savings, but that's, that, you know, I just instantly was like, oh, my gosh, you know? This is what people's fear was, that that's what's going to happen is all of a sudden we're going to have this huge umbrella, you know, in Shelburne and what about our, you know, our local schools?
So that would be some of the things you need to be really identifying. What are some of the worries you're hearing in your community? Plus, what are their hopes and dreams for this? Because they moved in that direction because of some hope and some dream and some opportunity. And how do you, as a board, state those, make them clear for people, and keep people informed about them?
Well, it's interesting, Matt. You know, I think two things. One, about what you're saying. You're talking about a philosophy. First, a philosophy of the board, a philosophy of the, of the way we're going to interact with our communities in these different communities. And then second, on top of that, there's like communication action items. And I think that, to this point in particular, how do we interact with those people? And keep this butt on, it's like, it's taxes. Like, they're waiting too to see that financial gain or not. Like, what motivated people to vote was the very clear message that we crafted to tell them that it would be, this would be positive if they voted. That, that is, yeah.
Yeah. So I think there are two, I'm hearing two things. You've crafted a message. Then I'd be making sure you're communicating and checking that message out, number one.
Right.
Number two, this is an option for you. But boards have a tendency to be passive. Because you're volunteer, because you've got a lot of work to do besides doing the work for board, this board. Part of it is, at some point, to make a shift that we're not going to be passive, we're going to be actively engaged with people. Not just the power brokers, but the average citizen, which is a, is a challenge, but it's doable. It's doable in many ways. But, and what I encourage boards to do is not have a board meeting for one month and have people go out and instead of meeting on Tuesday night or Monday night or whatever night this is, Tuesday. It is Tuesday. That what you do is in board meetings, plan an outreach. And so you plan three or four outreach meetings one month and board members just go out and meet with the Rotary, meet with the Lions Club, go to the senior citizen with some set focus that you're going to listen to them rather than tell them. That's what you're trying to do. And I'll tell you, it shocks them. Because usually their interaction with the board is you're coming to ask us for something. You want something. So when you go out and you say, we're here to hear what you have to say about this really important thing, framing that thing becomes important. But it changes the dynamic. I know a board that was in deep trouble has now shifted. And now when they're seen in the community, the community knows they're listening to them about important stuff. And they don't go to them for the stuff that goes on in the school. They go to the, what you have here. But they've shifted how people view them in the community. But it's a lot of work and you have a lot of work in front of you to do this merge. But I would actively encourage you to think strongly that it's not passive. We need to, if this was our message, how do we go out and reinforce for people what's going on? And what? Questions? Comments?
It's firing. Thank you very much.
So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Bill.
So we have local boards coming up. Dave had to exit. So as vice chair, I'm going to seek a motion to adjourn the CSSU board meeting. Is there a motion? And got a second from Mark, Lorna and Mark. All those in favor, say aye. Have a great local meeting. Thank you.